Hello and welcome to the Second Annual REA Board Candidate Forum. Thank you all for coming. We are grateful to have such great candidates here today. Thank you to Nadia Bandukta, to Amanda Hildangelo, Dilip Kovuri, Anthony Ray, and Palak Shah for caring so much about your community that you took the leap to run for a chance to serve. Thank you for responding to REA's written questions and for coming out tonight to elucidate your views with all those of us who share your concern and passion for this school district. It's not easy to get out there and run for elected office, and we respect each and every candidate for taking this leap. I'd like to introduce you to the League of Women Voters of Greater Princeton Area Moderator, Christine Florin. And I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters of the Greater Princeton Area for their guidance in making this event as fair and as informative as it can be. And without further delay, here is Ms. Florin.
Thank you. How are we doing, Don? Oh, that looks wonderful. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. We're going to start with an opening statement from each candidate. They will have two minutes for their opening statements. We'll go on and ask some questions from each candidate. They will have one minute to answer. Then we're going to a lightning round where each answer should only take 30 seconds. And a quick yes, no, agree, disagree would be the way to begin your answer in that round. And then we'll follow with a closing statement. Please keep your eye on the time keeper. He will hold up a sign when you have 15 seconds left and then a sign when it's time to stop. And you need to finish what you're saying at that time. So for the opening statements, I guess we'll just go left to right. Dilip, would you like to start? You have two minutes.
Sure. Thanks, Christine. Hello, everyone. My name is Dilip Kovuri. I've been a resident of Robbinsville since 2017. I have two kids in our school district, Pond and Sharon. I'm currently a board member. I was selected in a interview, public interview process in November 2022, and I've been on the board since then. I was part of the negotiating committee that we successfully negotiated a contract with the REA, the contentious contract situation that was going on. And we helped resolve that issue earlier this year. And during my past nine months, I've been involved in various key issues that affected our district, including the current budget crisis. I've been working in the healthcare industry for the past 18 years. I'm a technology professional as a principal architect, and I've been involved in various technology policymaking and management roles. And within Robbinsville, I've been an active volunteer in various sport activities. I've been a coach for various youth teams in soccer, basketball, softball, baseball, and even cricket. So I've been involved in the community. And I know I've been hearing about parents for the past four or five years about the challenges our district is facing. And I believe with my experience on the board for the past few minutes, a few months, I believe we have the opportunity to improve on what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Palak, please.
Hi. Good evening, all. My name is Palak Shah. I have been a resident of Robbinsville since 2021. And part of what brought me here is the nice, small, tight-knit personal community as well as good schools that obviously want the foundation for my kids. I have two boys in Pond Road Middle School. And a little bit about my background. I am a combination of finance and education. I worked in the financial sector on Wall Street for several years and then transitioned to teaching, in which I spent over a decade teaching middle school mathematics, as well as I had the opportunity to grow as an educator in becoming an instructional mathematics coach as well as a district K through five math supervisor. So those were some really wonderful experiences. And I left the profession technically in 2019, but that passion stayed with me, of course, which is part of what motivated me to run for the Board of Education open seats on the November election. In terms of what else, the other reason would probably just be, you know, ever since moving here, I know we have very strong programs, but seeing some of the things that have unfolded over the past two years, just like probably everyone in this room and many residents and parents across our town wanted to be able to help in that situation, offer solutions, and contribute in whatever way I can, not only with my background, but at the same time, as well as learn from the diverse perspectives that exist within our schools. So looking forward to telling you all a little bit more about me.
Thank you. Nadia, two minutes.
Hi. Thank you so much to the REA and League of Women Voters for doing this. It's so refreshing. I remember before I could even vote, helping out with League of Women Voters back in Hudson County to register voters, just because my father was a big advocate of civic engagement. So to see this and full circle and me and my, I'm not going to age myself, me and my current generational demographic. It's just exciting to be here. So thank you. So a little bit about myself. Nadia Bandukta, three boys. There's a lot of boys on this side. All of us have boys. And so they're fourth grade, fifth grade at Pond. And then I have an elementary school student in third grade and then a rising incoming Sharon for next year. And I hope that kindergarten exists next year. So definitely advocating for that for my kids and equal access for those coming after me. So the reason I am really getting involved in this process was the engagement that we had with the teacher contracts. And I remember having a passion moment, a moment of passion, in that because I knew I could make an impact. So I have an employee in labor relations background. I'm an employment litigator by background, but I pivoted. I worked on employment defense law, labor law. And I thought to myself, I needed to do something that was more for the people. So I left that field and I ended up in employee in labor relations as a good balance between business interests and community interests and employee interests. And that's what took me to employee in labor relations right now. And labor contracts, I've done them. I've redlined them. I billed them. And we do it with everybody in mind. And hopefully we never get to a place of concern again. But if should there be one, at least you have somebody with that background. And I'm just really excited to be joining my sleepmates who have other really priority, passion areas as well. And that was just one, and I hope to continue to engage in the next hour. And now I have to stop.
Thank you. Amanda?
Hi, everybody. My name's Amanda D'Angelo. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the REA for giving us this platform. I'm running for the Board of Education, and I hope that after this event, you guys are able to see that I have a deep connection to Robbinsville as well as a very deep experience in education. I started my career in mental health and special education. And after 15 years, I'm a special education manager at a very large school in urban Philadelphia. It gives me a lens of asking what is best for children and what is best for their development. And that will be the lens that you'll hear throughout today. I've been actively involved in this town and probably ran a lot of things since 2012, whether it's Moms Club or Girl Scouts or I run a massive charity and have worked with every single nonprofit in Bucks County and Mercer County for food security. It's my passion, and now I can never, ever go anywhere in my pajamas because I know a decent amount of people. I love this town, and I hope that knowing so many people makes me both accountable but understands our need here. I have so much experience to share, and I really want to make this school soar, not only for my kids, but also your kids. I will grow to partner with this community, and I look forward to working with you all in near future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anthony?
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I'd like to start by saying thank you to the League of Women Voters and REA for giving us this opportunity. Thank you for those who are attending here in person at Pond Middle School, and thank you for those watching online. My full name is Harry Anthony Ray. I go by Anthony Ray. Me and my family moved here to Robbinsville in 2020. I currently serve as an ITSM Process Specialist for Princeton University. That is a fancy term for I do IT project management and process improvement. One of the reasons why me and my family moved to Robbinsville is we value education very well. And when we were looking places to move, Mercer County jumped to the top of that list, and Robbinsville was in our top three schools, districts. The thing that made Robbinsville stand out among the other school districts on that list was the sense of community, and that has always been important for us. It is diverse community. It is something we've wanted for our child, especially with things that were going on during COVID and the times during our previous administration and government. One of the reasons why I love this community as well is being involved in sports. I serve as assistant coach for softball and basketball, and I love teaching young children because I think there are a lot of life lessons that they can learn from sports. And I love seeing their excitement when they don't know something and finally achieve it. And this leads back into like us leaning into Robbinsville and finding the speech community that we want to make our home. I'm happy for this opportunity. I hope that you will listen to what we have to present. I look forward to answering questions either tonight or in the future that you may have on why we and myself and my sleepmates will be perfect BOE candidates for your children and the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. We're going to proceed to the questions. And I'll kind of rotate around so that everyone has a chance to answer first. So Ms. Palak, you'll start with the first question. And now you only have one minute to answer. What do you see as the top three education issues that our board must address?
So I actually believe there's three top education issues that we need to pay attention to. And the first would be students having a firm grasp on the fundamentals, something that the board actually did address this year through the revised ELA and math blocks. But that's so important because, you know, even though state tests are just one component or one indicator of that, we should, you know, understand that that should still be the foundation of their education. The second issue that I think is important is providing well-rounded educational opportunities because academics are important, those four core subjects is what's going to give our students the foundation for life. But at the same time, different students succeed through different pathways. And so we need to ensure that we have those opportunities available for them. And then finally, an increased awareness of mental health and cognitive issues, especially coming out of COVID. Those things are very intangible, but they are just as important for the whole child.
Thank you. Nadia?
Okay, so I have three as well. And so staff, I'm going to list them out and then just briefly describe what I mean by them. So the three important topics to me to resolve for education is staff retention, academic enrichment, and then curriculum planning with a multitude of different data points. So the first is just staff retention. We know that obviously we have a concern with people or teachers believing that they may not have a future in Robbinsville, and we want to prevent that. And so that involves a lot of engagement and the ability for us to do proper budget planning so that there is not that concern and that we've got some excited teachers that walk into their classrooms every day. Academic enrichment is truly ensuring students have excellence and they're pursuing excellence in whatever they want to be pursuing it in. So whether it be the arts or whether it be more STEM classes or AP courses that we offer that. And then finally, the curriculum planning, just making sure that we're looking at several different data points. So if we have some I-ready programs, we also have other test scores that we look at in a more holistic way. Thank you.
Amanda?
Hi. We've been told that the district has made scheduling decisions based on both finance and also standardized test scores that came one year after COVID. As a teacher, I have the unique advantage to understand these nuances in data and curriculum and ask deeper questions. The district has purchased more I-ready curriculum in both writing and whole group reading. I do not feel that this is developmentally appropriate. And we have deprioritized Orton-Gillingham just three short years after it was introduced, trained all the teachers, and we need to start asking why. I've been at every board meeting probably since last year and have stood up and asked these questions. As a teacher and administrator, I can tell you that life changed after the pandemic, and there's an increased need for social, emotional learning. There's quantifiable data, and we need to start measuring it. How is the district tracking this? And we've mentioned as a goal and never talked about it again, the DEIB, diversity, equity, inclusion in classrooms. We need to start looking at that. Thank you.
Anthony?
I would say my top three I've listed are listening to student voices, teacher retention, and STEAM classes, and I'll go through each of those. I do believe that students of all ages should be listened to. We need to understand how they learn and what works for them and to improve upon their learning experience. I think for younger children, there needs to be more parent engagement. We could look to have monthly cycles of parents touching base with teachers to get that empathy from those students. I also think what has already been touched upon is teacher retention. I think great students learn from great teachers. If we want academic excellence in Robbinsville, we must attract and keep excellent teachers, and that is a final period there. Also, I think we need to increase STEAM. We need science, technology, engineering, the arts, and math. I think this will benefit all children. And more importantly, we should look to expand these programs to children that are not traditionally exposed to these. A lot of these are exposed to male students, but we should look to get those females as well. Thank you.
Dilip?
My top three, the first one being, of course, the financial responsibility and responsible spending that directly relates to class sizes and teacher retention and getting new teachers. So that's our top priority for our district, of course. But the second one being offering our students additional resources, additional sports and college-ready programs that can prepare them for college life and be successful in life after school. Third one, of course, we want to focus on our test scores and improve our school district rating, which directly would improve our property values. And this is by focusing on our fundamentals, math and ELA, which we are on the right track.
Okay. Our next question, we'll start with Nadia. How does a school board balance the need to provide a quality education with the need to respond to the local taxpayer burden?
So I'll start by saying it's clear that we're all taxpayers, and that's at the forefront of all our families and all our minds. So first and foremost, you know, if we were to be elected to board, we're considering that because it impacts our own family, how we deal with things on a quarterly and annual basis. But with that, we know that, you know, property taxes can go up with regards to strong school districts. But in addition to that, we know that we have a shortfall, and we have budgetary needs, and we have specific needs within our school communities, within our student population, parental involvement, and the plethora and the list goes on that we also need to consider. So it's a very holistic view of things. And to take it in a silo and just think just the tax burden without thinking all the things of our advantages that we can have from five different areas of our community population would be, we would be remiss. So it's really about collecting those opinions and making sure that we're making the right decisions for our entire community and our students first and foremost. Thank you.
Amanda?
I've been boots on the ground door to door to get the $983,000 from the state. I've met with countless partners to discuss any and all solutions, the Plan A, the Plan B, the Plan Z. And I can tell you with these efforts, when we found out in April and May, New Jersey State Aid and the S2 funding is complex. It's a lot of variables, and it can be hard to predict what can be eliminated, but we can do better. We can start taking inflation into consideration in the formula. We can start advocating with reform in how schools are funded with our local legislators. Our school board needs to adequately plan for transparency in how you're going to spend this money if the budget goes through. The data shows that school districts that invest in their schools and spend more money do better. And we need to do the best thing we can for our kids.
Anthony?
When money is spent wisely, it leads to better outcomes, higher test scores, increased graduation rates, and well-rounded students. We all want our schools to thrive. But we are at a crossroads now with the public question, which is putting the capacity to raise revenues for education squarely on our residents' shoulders. This is a daunting task, but it will allow us time to move financially forward and be fiscally responsible. We are dedicated to make sure that we move our schools forward to have the community financial well-being in mind. I think as a BOE member, we need to be transparent in regards to our financial planning and listen to, involve staff and community in this information process when appropriate. I believe taxpayers who are now being asked to invest the harder money, rather, due to public question deserve to be informed with straightforward updates and on how their tax dollars are spent to support our schools. Thank you.
Dilip?
Yeah, the school board has to work with our community and collaborate with our district's goals and priorities and work on a budget that prioritizes what we plan for our future. Of course, this has to be done with the focus on spending on the most important issues at hand and services without compromising the quality of education. We understand the taxpayer burden, especially on our seniors and our fixed income residents and effects of inflation and rising costs, of course. And but we also have to keep an eye on our future and our children, and it has a direct impact on our school ratings and our tax burden. We can look into alternative resources to supplement our school's budget and exploring options for grants and partnerships. This can reduce costs and attract and help the school with our budget. And with the enhanced efficiency of technology, we can improve professional development and the quality of education.
Thank you. Palak?
So this is actually a critical question that I think there is no hard and fast answer to because it does take a balance. The balance of ensuring we have enough funding to not only look at the short term but have long-term planning in place as well. And then that balance needs to be stricken with the fact that we all have many costs. We all work very hard, and we all would be on the hook for the extra taxes. So with that said, I think year after year, obviously exorbitant tax increases wouldn't work. However, if we maintain the resources available to us moving forward in the future, be it with that 2% bank cap or whatever it might be that can at least help shore up what we need to ensure the success of our schools. The other thing is responsible spending wherever it's possible. But the most important piece is, I think, looking for additional revenue streams because it is very clear that our issue is a revenue issue. And so, you know, being more bigger advocates with the state and county might as well help.
Okay. Next question, starting with Amanda. How do you propose attracting and keeping excellent school employees in the district?
Respect. There will need to be a revamping of how we speak about teachers and to teachers. It's a culture shift in Robbinsville, and it needs to happen now. Positivity brings positivity. Start celebrating teachers and the amazing things they do by sharing stories, images, and messages. Publicize how you develop teachers and trust teachers. Teachers always want to improve and get better. Offer that opportunity to them. We lost a lot of teachers, and while teacher salaries have improved, the culture is still lacking. It might sound like a little thing to an outsider, but I'm a teacher, and there's a lot of new teachers here. And we come here to work with people that we love and under people that we love. We need to start fostering those teacher besties. That sideways glance in the hall or that candy snuck to you by your co-teacher, it matters. And with a bunch of new teachers, we need to start fostering these relationships. Thank you.
Anthony?
I would start by talking to current staff and ask the simple question, why Robbinsville? I'd ask what they wish they had, what they love and what they hate. I'd take that list and I review it with judgment without prejudice. I would take a hard look at what they hate and look for ways to try and address those issues. I'd review what they wish they had, and I'd look for quick wins to try and show them that we're trying to improve the situations they're in. I would continue working on that list, and I would ask for updates accordingly. The list may never be all love of what all teachers have, but I think the act of listening will show great value and appreciation. I do believe that teaching is a calling and not a profession, and I think teachers understand this and the community understands this, and we need to show them that respect and appreciation for what they do for our children and for their education within our school system. Thank you.
Dilip?
With the latest contract that we finalized earlier this year, our district has given a pretty good compensation and benefits package to our teacher that is comparable or even better than some of our neighboring school districts. But we know education and teachers, they are not focused on salary alone. We can improve our offerings by providing additional learning opportunities, additional professional development, and improving the positive work environment that we have in Robbinsville. This is where the employees would feel valued, recognized, supported, and rewarded. Doing all of this can attract new teachers, retain existing teachers, and we see the progress as recently we also saw that multiple teachers applied to a few open positions that were listed in Robbinsville.
Palak?
So as a former educator and school administrator, I know 100% that when you go into teaching, it's definitely not for the pay. Unfortunately, it's not for the respect. It's because you have something in you that you want, you believe in it. You believe in children. You believe in our future. And so to that effect, it's really important to maintain a great culture. So I believe three factors contribute to retaining quality employees in any field, right? But especially like when I was at Elizabeth Public Schools, these are the same things that had a critical impact on educator retention. Pay, leadership, and culture. So our Board of Education has taken a great step in addressing the issue of teacher salaries with the most recent teacher contract. Continuing a tradition of experienced and receptive leadership at both the building and district level will go a long way in retaining effective staff. However, I believe the strongest driver attracting and keeping excellent educators is school culture. If we can regularly look at those interactions and decide what they value best about our district, then I think we can retain the best.
Nadia?
Thank you. So I firmly believe that loyalty breeds loyalty. And so if we think about what had happened over this year and what we're trying to get out of, there's a lot of steps we still need to take. And I think everybody said some answers that resonate, right? So professional development and compensation and respect and culture and engagement. And I can say first and foremost that I work every single day now in human resources, human capital management. And if you think about what keeps people where they are and keeps them excited is that culture and engagement piece. So I really know that we went through COVID. We overcame that. We went through negotiations with teacher contracting, and we overcame that. Then we have budget cuts, and we're trying to overcome that. Yet we might face future budget cuts. So there's still some steps that we need to take that really build a two-way street. Should we ever have to face what we need to face with budget cuts, and I hope we do not, the staff that we already have, the teachers that we already have, there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. And the barriers between REA and teacher involvement, they don't need to, and the board don't need to be present. We can build better bridges for sure with that culture engagement. Thank you.
Okay, next question, starting with Anthony. In light of our current financial crisis, is outsourcing programs or staffing something you would consider, why or why not?
I would say in light of our current program, it is something I would not look to. I think what we want to remain is the fact that we want to retain teachers. We want to be fiscally responsible. I do also believe there is an increase in the cost for bringing outside help. So I think first and foremost, we need to be financially responsible and maintain what we currently have within the school system.
Dilip?
Yeah, I don't think a complete outsourcing of teaching is possible. Students need that in-person engagement with the teacher. However, for certain programs, you are able to enhance getting outside help or consulting with, say, a professor from university is adding some resources and help. or consulting with, say, a professor from a university as adding some resources and help. So that's possible, but I don't think we can completely outsource our teachers at all.
Pelak.
I actually do not believe that outsourcing would provide the value and the quality that we want, need, and see amongst our teachers. There's just a different type of personal investment that happens when they're here day-to-day, and they believe in the community. But I do think one way to leverage some of that, given our current circumstances, is look into partnerships. Partnerships not to replace the teachers that we have, but partnerships just to enhance what we can offer our students.
Nadia.
Yeah, no, so outsourcing is an interesting question. I think, so with operations and outsourcing, we know we have a lot of dilemmas in quality and also engagement. So if you think about outsourcing, do they feel like they are part of a culture? No. Do they feel invested in the community? No. So if you think about outsourcing teacher and the way that they're going to be working with our students, I think the better thought is to think about the partnerships that exist with technical and vocational schools, or Mercer County and the community colleges here that may have more of a relationship that we can build that is incremental, and there's relationships that we can sort of develop from AP or advanced courses, from academics, but all the way to technical abilities that we think are more pertinent to people's interests when it comes to technical and vocational interests, which I think would really be more helpful for the interests of the community, because people are of all abilities, and we don't want to just think about advanced courses for advanced students. But there's also technical courses we need to think about.
Amanda.
Hi, guys. I'm gonna think back to an actual situation where the board suggested that we outsource our teacher assistants. And I'm a special education director, and special education is my most favorite thing to talk about. When you have a special education student that has a relationship with a teacher assistant, they develop that relationship over time with trust and caring. When you think about using outsourcing with a company like Delta or a private company, you might save money, but you are going to turn over those teachers' assistants, and the kids will suffer. We've already seen the REA, and we've already seen teachers say, "This is not a good thing. Let's stick with what we know, and let's never outsource those teacher assistants." And if we're going to talk about that, let's really come to the table, because there's a lot of thought that should go into that, and we shouldn't do it.
Okay. We're gonna go a little further into this, asking about your financial priorities, and if you had to, what areas would you consider cutting first? Dillip.
With the current financial climate and the budget crisis, there's a need to maintain our current programs while being financially responsible and not compromising on the quality of education that we offer to our residents. Reducing class sizes, of course, are first priority, and especially for younger class, at a younger class age. And it's an important aspect, and we can't do that without hiring more staff. I would focus on our aging facilities and getting new teachers and modernizing classrooms, too. But all of that comes with a financial cost and burden. Reducing or cutting programs is not easy, and it definitely requires a deep discussion and balance without cutting the quality of education.
Pelak.
That's a very difficult question, because I don't think anything that we offer is something that we could, should, or want to part with. I would just maintain that probably keeping the big picture in mind would help us focus the priorities on what to retain. And perhaps the only consideration for anything that could or should be let go if you have to would be whatever has the least impact on student learning, not just learning, but like their holistic experience at school. So it would really depend on looking at those budget priorities. But whatever has the least or the furthest touch to the students would probably be the only thing that can possibly considered first.
Nadia.
Yeah, I would echo that this is a very difficult question. But if I, again, if I were elected, I'd try to see the entire budget souped to nuts. Try to understand it. I like to poke holes. It's what I do for a living, and I would do the same when the budget came across me, because if there is a gap, I want to understand where there's going to be an opportunity where we are going to be able to cut. But at the same time, I'm not going to be able to make those decisions arbitrarily. We have an entire board behind us. We have community with community interests, we have children with specific interests. So it would be really, truly a forum in which we would have to consider people's opinions on this. And it's a multi-way street in that situation. And I do not want it to be very directive, and I don't want to make arbitrary decisions on my own. So I don't have a clear-cut answer. All I know is teacher classroom ratios between teacher and student is not something I think we should compromise on, because that's really going to truly hurt the education that our teachers are gonna have, and the pressures that they're gonna have to do more with less resources, and it affects the kids.
Amanda.
Hi. So the current school district has stated that we're going to try to maintain where we are. Robbinsville cannot afford any other cuts. But this is why the public question is so important. It, we already know what they're gonna cut. It's kindergarten, it's sports, and it's clubs. That's where you get the most bang for your buck, and no one wants to do that. But that's, if the public question does not pass, that's what's gonna happen. The district has to start developing a five-year financial plan to avoid this situation in the future. We need to incrementally build this district's base budget back up. And so we don't have a massive burden on taxpayers every few years with another public question. We must be mindful of the current state and the state aid formula and pay attention to the changes in enrollment and wealth of our own town so that we can adequately deal with the situation.
Anthony.
It's a very difficult question, as everyone up here has already stated. I think first and foremost, a priority for me is the whole child experience. And so I wanted to prioritize students, their experience within school, and teachers. But obviously, budget cuts do need to happen. I think we need to look at what we can afford to lose as a community versus what will affect a student's academic career. I think there are things that we need to look outside of the schools when we look within the entire BOE budget. That will be a priority. But I do think the first and foremost thing is to look at our budget, look at where spending is happening, look at where there can be additional cost savings. Maybe we can do renegotiation with current contracts, things of nature, too, so we don't have to affect a child's educational experience.
Okay, next question, starting with Pelak. How can a school board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies are being implemented?
So to know those things would require definitely various metrics, right? There's definitely data, state testing, things like that. So quantitative data points do need to be looked at, but they are just one component. Because at the same time, you have many qualitative intangible pieces that should inform a lot of decisions. So I would say that includes, you know, parental feedback, community feedback, teacher feedback in both the goals as well as if, you know, implementation of policies. And it needs to be collaborative, because that's the only way you can get a whole picture of, you know, what one person might see as success, another person might recognize and have a different perspective or view from which to look at it. So I definitely think that the involvement and conversation and discussions from various groups within our community would be key alongside the data and the numbers.
Nadia.
So I just would say that in this situation, I would never take my foot off the pedal. So if a goal or a policy is implemented, to recheck, find out which subcommittee is going to be responsible, incrementally check into that, and not be afraid of being a culture that pivots direction if needed. So based on, like we had mentioned, teacher feedback, staff feedback, collection of data points as to how the students are doing, those are things that we need to consider on a maybe quarterly basis. Whatever the metric is that the subcommittee establishes for whatever goal and policy was implemented, don't take your foot off the pedal. Keep going, keep reviewing, keep asking questions, keep probing, because the change is constant. And if we are a forward-thinking district, the way that I hope we are, the way that I believe we are, that's what we should continue to do every time we put something in place.
Amanda.
Hi. So the research is already out on this question. The Center for Public Education just produced a large study on this topic, and the answer is clear. It's goals, clear data, and communication to the community. If you want to have a high-achieving district, you need to set goals, like we did with the five-year committee plan back in January, all the way to May, excuse me. We need to communicate to staff and the community how we identify these clear goals, how we improve on them, how they're being executed, and how we're progress monitoring. This is actually what I do in my real-life job. I'm a compliance manager. We need to start selling this to the community. The board needs to prove that we're successful in order to be transparent. The community needs to buy into what we're selling, and we need to focus on goals and then show how we're answering them.
Anthony.
I believe an effective BOE must work towards building a more collaborative relationship with staff and the community. I know my experience as an IT project manager that no plan, no matter how good, will work without stakeholder buy-in. So we must make sure our stakeholders are bought into what we're trying to lay out. A clearly laid-out plan with a mission statement outlining objectives, clear deliverables will help us understand what we are all working towards. Transparent and scheduled communication is also key, so we have check-in periods where people understand what is the expected goal, when it will be communicated, and where we are within the process. We should look to elicit feedback from staff, community members, and if need be, even students through their parents to demonstrate the intended result we are working for is being achieved. Once we show this status and advise these updates, we can course-correct when problems occur and stay aligned with stakeholder trust behind us. Thank you.
Dillip.
The school board would collaboratively work with the administration, teachers, and the community in goal-setting, strategic planning, and establish policies that align with the district's goals and visions. They can effectively do this by establishing a working relationship with the community, the teachers, and the parents, and by monitoring progress, by collecting data on test scores, graduation rates, and other indicators that track progress towards their goals and visions. With strategic planning, we are able to set clear goals and measurable goals. We are already working on that. We can develop a plan for implementation and communication and monitoring those goals. With performance reviews of senior staff and superintendent, we can check if the board's expectations are met and if they're aligned with our district's goals and visions. We are making progress with Lincoln and I R D testing already, and I think we are on a good path towards improving our metrics.
Thank you. Starting with Nadia, next question. Is school choice something that would improve or detract from equality education?
Is school choice, as in selecting public versus private education?
I'm not sure. You have some latitude here. It could be just choosing a different school within the district.
Okay, can you just repeat the question? Sorry. I feel like one of those spelling bee-
Is school choice something that would improve or detract from equality education?
Look, it's, this is a very specific to each family and individual to think about, right? So if there are specific needs you have for your child with special abilities that you believe we are not able to provide in a system like we have currently, then A, advocate for it. Show up to BOE meetings. Tell us how we aren't meeting those special education requirements, and that you might take your child out, because allow us as board members to make the changes that you need before you make a decision to leave, because we owe that to you. You pay the taxes, you have special needs in your families, whether it's special advanced needs or special needs in other ways. So, you know, give us the chance to make, to help you make a more informed decision, because it is a personal one. It would never be my place to tell someone which way is the right way or the wrong way. It's something you need to ask your family, your community, and I would hope you build trust enough with the BOE to give us an opportunity to see if we can offer a decision before you turn out of public school and maybe make different choices.
Amanda.
So this is an interesting question for me. I am a charter school teacher. In Philadelphia and the urban settings across America, you have the choice to go to a charter school or you have a choice to go to a public school. Charter schools are on the chopping block right now. It takes funding away from public schools. My charter school's different. It's a neighborhood school. It's a Renaissance school. That means that we turn around school districts that have been given to us because their data numbers are so low. But we don't accept lottery students. We take everybody. So for school choice with charters specifically, I would say I don't support it, and I don't see the need here in Robbinsville for that. Thank you.
Anthony.
I'm gonna reiterate what has already been stated. I do believe that's a personal choice that each family must address. There could be many factors affecting that, financial, special needs, things of that nature. I do, however, believe, I do believe in public school systems. I believe we have a quality public school system, and if given the choice, I would want to invest in a public school system as opposed to a charter school. So if, based upon the question, I am an advocate for public schools versus charter schools and would lean that way. Thank you.
Dillip.
By school choice, if residents are sure, they have the ability to choose between private and public schools, of course, it comes down to various factors, like my fellow members said here, affordability and other special needs factors, they play into the picture, of course. But given a choice, I would strongly believe a public school offers a diverse group of kids, and this is very important for a whole child education and a development of the child in a wider society. I strongly believe in a good public education system, and with Robbinsville, we don't have a wide choice, anyway. So it's imperative that we improve on the school district that we have.
Pelak.
So having my background in Elizabeth Public Schools, as well as living in a suburban district for many years, I have seen firsthand the impact or implications of school choice. So school choice not being when you're choosing private versus public, but more within the public educational space. And I would say that it takes resources and funding away from the current school. And oftentimes, what happens is that you end up, even the quality of the programs are highly concentrated in one location or another. So you're also not getting the diversity of students, you're not getting the diversity of opportunities and offerings for your larger community. So when it comes to school choice, I think it undermines the public education system, and we instead need to just focus on shoring up our own investment in our public schools and ensuring that we have the type of quality programs and opportunities that may be having someone go elsewhere.
Okay, thank you. Next question, starting with Amanda. Parents have expressed concerns about the schedules at Pond. What are your impressions of the, Pond and at Sharon? What are your impressions of the current schedules? And if elected to the board, would you make recommendations for any changes?
So I speak a lot at the board about this. This is my passion. Let me be very clear. We made choices on scheduling in this school district based on finances and making sure we could cut teachers in the future. It's not okay for kids. You have a reduction in lunch, you have a reduction in recess, you have 87-minute blocks of math, you have 87-minute blocks of reading. This is not developmentally appropriate for children. That would be the exact thing that I focus on, and I have continued to send in my research and questions and spoke at every board meeting about this. Thank you so much.
Anthony.
This is a hot-button topic, and I'll say this. I know I myself and my slate mates have had conversations about this topic with the current administrators. We've offered suggestions where simply, you know, 84 minutes is too long for a young child. I have an eight-year-old in the audience today who I've spoken to about this, and it's a lot to take on. We've made suggestions that we could just trim some of this down. Say, for instance, take two minutes off each period and add it back to lunch to give the children a chance to have more of a social experience, and this has been turned by the current administration as well. So, one of the first priorities for me would be to take the active feedback the community has given about this in WhatsApp chats and emails to administration, and to make sure that their voices are heard and this issue is addressed. Thank you.
Dylan.
So, I'd like to say that, yeah, we've heard the feedback from the community, and the curriculum standards or the schedules mainly were focused because of our declining test scores, and there was a need to shore up our fundamentals and get back to basics. So, increasing our block of math and ELA, which will start alternate, on alternate days to every day, will improve our test scores. And there was a presentation done last public meeting where the lunch times were addressed. So, we are better off than our neighboring schools with regards to lunch, but we are listening to the feedback, and I think there is scope for improvement. But I think with schedules, there's definitely, we need to focus on our fundamentals with math and ELA. But, of course, we are open to the community. We can look at revised schedules maybe next year.
Pellic.
I can tell you from firsthand experience, I worked on scheduling when I was at Elizabeth Public Schools, and it is an enormous task. And there's so many different things to take into consideration when you have instructional, a lot of instructional time as per teacher contracts, when you have certifications, when you have state mandates and other standards that you have to look at. So, definitely, scheduling is not an easy task. But what I do say firsthand, from firsthand experience, is that it is standard, sound instructional practice for decades to have 80 to 90 minutes of ELA and/or math. And oftentimes, it can seem like it's very boggling, but if you have the proper teacher professional development, you can really hone in on those fundamental skills. You have the opportunity to, you know, give students some independent or enrichment time for those that are advancing. You have the time to work with the students that might be struggling. I definitely do think, you know, schedules need to be looked at, but that's one thing that I think is a positive change.
Nadia.
Sure, thank you. Yes, as my colleague said, when this first was coming and introduced, immediately, we tried to get in front of Dr. Wisneski and the curriculum head. And, well, we were, first of all, grateful that they met us, so I have to say that the partnership and openness to have dialogue was there. We gave our feedback, some strong research to sway the other way, but I'm sure that there is research to show the other way as well. So, it's really about the balance, which takes me to my point about, now that it's implemented, we have to ask ourselves, once hopefully we're on the board, the who, what, where, when, right? So, if you think about the, and the why. So, why is it in place? Was it really a response to teacher cuts, or is it truly to get our scores up? What is it trying to achieve? So, what are those actual metrics we're going to do and review? When can we expect the change, and who does it impact? So, if it is impacting the teachers in the way that they can produce results in their classroom, and the kids are not getting enough socialization, then perhaps we do up the professional development to give opportunities for teachers to work better with their kids in the classroom with different tools, maybe an additional snack time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to come up on some quick questions that we're calling the lightning round. You'll only have 30 seconds, and we don't want you to get into the weeds. We're really looking for, do you agree, do you disagree, a really short, concise gut feeling that will give people an impression of your reaction to some of these issues? I guess we'll start with Anthony. Again, 30 seconds. Providing a wide range of books in school libraries, including those that may cover diverse perspectives and controversial topics, is important for education. Agree, disagree, somewhere in the middle?
I 100% agree.
Okay, you can elaborate on that. You do have 30 seconds.
Sorry, I thought you wanted it quick to the point. We are a diverse community. I think there are state standards in place to make sure that children are reading appropriate information at their skill and grade level. Parents who may want to opt out should be informed if they do have questions, but this is why communication is very key. But I believe if the literature is approved by the state, it should be allowed.
Okay, Dylan.
I'd agree. I believe that children should have an opportunity to research and explore a wide range of thoughts, and having that in the library is a good opportunity. Of course, it should be age-appropriate, and whatever books are in the library should be reviewed by the librarian before it goes in there. So, as long as it's age-appropriate, and if it's not objectionable by the parents when the kids check it out, I feel it shouldn't be a problem.
Pellic.
I agree. I believe that it's so important to have access to these varied types of resources and perspectives. It just makes you an open-minded person and individual, and you learn so much from something that you might not be exposed to otherwise. At the same time, though, we do have to respect the personal wishes of whatever goes on in an individual's home, so that factor is key. But I think the availability or opportunity for it is also an important one for our kids.
Nadia.
Yep. My gut reaction, as you asked for it, was absolutely yes. So, we just going into the weeds, but not going into the weeds quite much. But I grew up in a culture where, or my parents grew up in a culture where there were certain things that were banned. But I had a father who was more of an educator, who said, "You're going to read everything, and you're going to make your choices, and you're going to be informed, and you're going to learn about somebody else, and you're going to learn about different cultures and religions and faiths and perspectives, and that's what's going to make you you." And I would want that for our entire community, and there is legislature in place, right?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Amanda.
Hi. Yes, I agree, but I want to have a caveat. The BOE already passed this book review process in August, just this past August, with the help of Amanda Gruber. If any book is requested to be banned, it must first be reviewed by the school district in the Board of Education. Parents have the right to decide what their children read, and we want to make sure it's age-appropriate.
Okay, starting with Dylan. Next question. It is important for schools to promote critical thinking and open discussion about curriculum content.
Is there a question there? It is important.
It is important for schools to promote critical thinking and open discussion about curriculum content.
Yes, it's important for schools. Having a wide curriculum and options for students to explore resources in curriculum thinking just expands their horizons, and having the openness to discover new thoughts and ideas, this improves the thought of our young minds and enhances them to be successful in life. So, yes.
Pellic.
Can you just repeat it, if you don't mind?
You want me to read it again?
Please.
Sure. It is important for schools to promote critical thinking and open discussion about curriculum content.
Absolutely. I think critical thinking is a skill that needs to be developed. It doesn't come automatic. We need to teach our kids to think in different ways, how to probe further, so that they themselves can succeed. And also, in terms of curriculum content, I mean, it's important, because if we have that diversity of perspective and opinion as to how we can draw things out, I mean, standards aren't going to change, but how you can enhance that educational experience for those standards is important.
Nadia.
Yes, so I also agree, and I would say if we did not open it up to people's perspectives on what curriculum they want to see, we would be remiss. To collect feedback about what our future-focused areas would be, like AI and digital, and having our high school students and middle school sort of say that this is what we're interested in, this is what's in the market, I would say is what we need to bring. But also, at the same time, thinking about soft skills, like critical thinking, I mean, to be successful in the workplace and when you leave school, those critical skills are important.
Thank you. Amanda.
The goal, oh, yes, yes. The goal of a school is actually to educate, but also to create critical thinkers. So, we have to allow them the opportunity to give that feedback. We want our kids to reflect their current world and question what they're learning, of course.
Anthony.
I would also agree with, yes, I do believe that school is a place of critical learning. And I do believe if a child doesn't go to school, and they're just regurgitating fact upon fact, what are they really learning? So, they do need the opportunity to be able to question, to have open-ended conversations, and to explore new areas, and I think this leads to a better, well-rounded individual.
Okay, starting with Pellic. How can communication between the Board of Education and the Education Association be improved?
So, I'm going to be honest that I don't necessarily know the direction in which it flows currently, from the concept of, you know, from the Board of Education directly to the Education Association. But what I do think is critical is involving them in many of the processes, a lot of the steps. Also, just, you know, if there's policy changes, they, teachers have boots on the ground. Teachers know firsthand kind of what, how it looks when it's implemented, so that feedback would be definitely very critical.
Thank you. Nadia.
Yes, I'm going to be mindful of the stop. Poll surveys, I would say, I would allow for the REA to be that direct communicator to the teachers, so that they can give the intel to the board before they make decisions that they need to implement or policies or anything that's in place that they're thinking about. To use the REA as the poll survey owners and the creation of those questions and the forum where teachers can bring that perspective and then funnel it to the Board of Ed with an open line of communication, I think is super essential.
Amanda.
May I have the question again?
How can communication between the Board of Education and the Robbinsville Education Association be improved?
Well, I don't know about you, but a year ago, I watched my emails blow up and my text threads blow up between what was happening with the Board of Education, the upper administration, and the way they were talking about teachers in our school. I'm not okay with it. It can never happen again. I'm sending my kids here because I trust these teachers. They love my kids, and we need to revamp the way we talk to teachers.
Anthony.
First and foremost, I would start with a respectful tone, as Amanda just touched on when I first got involved with running for the Board of Ed. The contentious nature of that relationship was one of the things that really struck me as disheartening. So, I would ask that both sides meet at the table, and I would personally think that the Board of Ed should ask what they do to better serve the REA, to develop a better partnership, and this will lead to better communication.
Dylan.
The question was, board and REA, the union, but not the teachers directly. I believe the superintendent has regular meetings with the REA, and we can improve on those communications and collaborations. Wherever legally possible, if we are able to have regular cadence with the REA, that would be great, and hearing their opinions out and any complaints and any issues that the board can address via the superintendent or directly.
Okay, next question, starting with Nadia. Using the new state health curriculum biological vocabulary learning goals is the right way to teach health?
I'd have to say, I needed to be more educated on all of the clauses within that policy in the legislature to really make an informed call and decision. But I would say that if it's vetted through legislature, that's something that schools have to comply to. And if there are specific things that certain families feel are uncomfortable for their certain curriculum, then come to the BOE about that and allow for us to sort of help shape the options that you might have if you don't believe in that standard sort of being shared in the classroom, and perhaps options exist. But I know the school has to follow certain protocols, but it doesn't mean we have to be draconian.
The state passed the new health curriculum in 2019, and it was delayed because of the pandemic and really influenced in 2023. Educate yourself. If you're a parent in this district and you have a concern, you have the right to opt out. The curriculum has to be produced and published two weeks before it's even given. So, educate yourself. It's your Fourteenth Amendment right. It's your right as your parent.
Anthony.
I do believe the schools are required to meet legislative standards that are set, but as my slate mate just pointed out, I believe parents are responsible for what their children do learn, and if there's a level of being uncomfortable or something, parents should speak with the Board of Ed. They should speak with administrators of the local schools, and if they have concerns, they should look to opt their children out of these courses.
Dylan.
If the curriculum is mandated by the Department of Education, there's not much the school can do. But if it is on a guidance level, then we can definitely open it up to discussion and have an option where the parents can opt out if they're uncomfortable with it. But unless it's, if it's a mandated thing like what we had before, there's not much that the school can do.
Pellic.
So, I certainly echo what everyone has shared in regards to know what those standards are, so that you yourself can advocate on behalf of your child, right? So, you know what your options are, or if it's something that you don't want them to have exposure to. But at the same time, I think it's important to recognize that sometimes there might be things that we're personally uncomfortable with, yet you may, it might benefit them to have certain exposure to it. I'm not saying that all the language, I'm not saying everything is cognitively appropriate, but at the same time, decide if the choice you're making is...
Thank you. Okay, venturing a little further in this direction, starting with Amanda. Agree, disagree, somewhere in between. Accommodations and support for students experiencing gender issues are necessary.
Listen, we're a public school, and we need to accommodate all students, whether you represent as a variable he, she, they, that doesn't matter. This school is for everyone, and we need to accommodate that.
Anthony.
We are a diverse community. As pointed out, we are a public school. We do need to accommodate all students. We need to be respectful of their choices, and I think this is one of the reasons why DEI initiatives are so important, so we help develop this understanding among students of all ages.
Dylan.
I'd agree. Being a public school, we should be open to all ideas, and if a child is making a choice, we should be respectful of that and communicate it properly and provide the necessary accommodation.
Pellic.
I think as a public education system, we do have to look at the needs or desires or social, mental, emotional being, well-being of each of our kids. So, certainly, that those resources need to be in place, but at the same time, I think having that open communication with families, because those are also very personal decisions are equally as important.
Nadia.
Yeah, I have always advocated for accommodations to be provided for any protected category in what I do daily, and so whether it was a private employer or in a public education building that you're walking towards, rights are rights. And so, if somebody needs an accommodation, we have to consider it with open arms and really think about whether it would ever cause an undue hardship. And the answer would be, if anyone is uncomfortable, there has to be an open line of communication to consider what those discomforts are, but also, still at the same time, really offer the accommodation that are necessary for that child to really feel included.
Okay, Anthony. Agree, disagree, somewhere in between. Outsourcing services or instruction of classes is a good way to reduce costs.
I do believe it depends on the category and what is being outsourced. However, I am always for the whole-child experience. I believe a child learns better with a teacher in front of them. What I've seen over the pandemic, over Zoom, is remote learning is not necessarily the option, but sometimes maybe the only one, but I would always advocate for in-class teaching.
Dylan. Dillip.
I would say somewhere in between, depending on the type of, type of curriculum or, or course, it has to be in-person. If, if there's a specialized service that, that doesn't require an in-person need, then we can look to outsource and reduce costs. But if it's, if it's affecting, without affecting the quality of education for the child. So I stick with somewhere in between, depending on the...
Pellic.
So I would say that if it has to do with core instruction, that certainly isn't something that can be outsourced. But at the same time, if, as a cost savings, if we can find other enrichment opportunities or other opportunities that wouldn't be able to exist within the school building, but having that outsourced could enhance someone's educational experience, then it should be considered, but not at the detriment of key instruction.
Nadia.
Yeah, and where we consider potentially leveraging vocational schools, technical schools, practical life courses, critical skills, thinking that may not be available as a resource due to budget or whatever it might be in our classrooms. I think outsourcing is a consideration, but we have to think a little bit about what that looks like in phasing, what that looks like in metrics, success. How are we measuring our students against it? What's the feedback being, you know, given on those outsourcing mechanisms? And really just be able to pivot one way or the other, whether we bring it back into our schools or keep using those outsourcing opportunities.
Amanda.
I'm going to use a real-life scenario. I've sat at Board of Education meetings and listened to students who were not happy with outsourcing language programs. You lost your language teachers here, and then they came and said, "Oh, that's okay. You can do language courses online." It didn't work, and we shouldn't do it.
Okay, starting with Dillip, this will be our last lightning round question. Agree, disagree, somewhere in between. Increasing the school budget by 4.8 million is necessary.
I was advised by our attorney that I'm not allowed to speak on the, as a board member. But as a private, private citizen, I'd say this is an important and required, required cost to keep, to maintain our services and programs and our quality of education that we provide in Robinsville.
Pellic.
I think it's critical we need to invest in our children. We need to ensure that they have the opportunities, that our schools have the opportunities, that our teachers have the right resources. So I, I think it's critical for not only our current situation, but as well as for the long-term stability of our school system.
Nadia.
I personally moved to the school district, this district for the school district. And so if I reflect back on all the colleagues, the neighbors, and all the people, and kind of do an anecdotal, anecdotal poll and say, "Who else did that?", I would say 70% of who I ever engage with in Robinsville say the same thing. And if we are going to remain status quo and advance and sort of look at ourselves as a premier school district that will continue to attract top talent and give our kids quality education and have strong teacher retention, it is a necessary step that we need to take, and I hope everyone votes yes.
Amanda.
There is no other choice. If you have a kid here, you are nervous. The teachers are nervous, this community is nervous. What happens to our, our community if we don't pass 4.8? There are no other options. That $983,000 we got from the state, that's temporary. That $2.1 million that were in the hole, that's not going away. That 2.7 that the state says that we're going to get cut, it's going to happen. We need 4.8.
Anthony.
I would say the alternative, if we don't get to 4.8, is we know what we've lost going into this year, so it can only get worse. So I believe as myself, as a parent, or any parent who has small children in the school system, there is no option but to vote for the public question.
Okay, any remaining questions? I have had to do with the public question, and I have no idea what that is. I'm assuming it has something to do with that 4.8. So what I'm going to ask is that you give us your closing statements. Try to concentrate a bit on the fiscal issues because that seems to be an area where we, we have the most interest. And also, you know, a little bit, something about yourself as to why you think you're the best candidate. So I'm going to start with Anthony, and we're going to work our way back. You have two minutes.
This is the closing statement, correct? Okay. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone for their time. Again, thank the REA, League of Women Voters, everyone who stayed this long and participated, both in-person and online. I, I just think if there's one thing I want everyone to take away from this is that it is imperative we work together to identify and implement effective solutions to be physically responsible for our school system moving forward. We know where we are today. We know why we have the 4.8 question on there. What we are looking to do is not point fingers, but how do we move the needle forward? I think we need to improve upon investing in the whole child educational experience, making sure that lost programs that we no longer have, we look for meaningful ways to bring those back. Because there are children of various educational levels. Some are high achievers, some have IDPs and special needs. We do not want to be a school system where we are focused on a one-size-fits-all, and children get lost in the mix. So what I do want to understand is that education is the foundation for lifelong success. And as a father of a third grader who is incredibly 1,000% invested in Robinsville's community and the school system, I hope everyone will join me in voting for the public question and looking forward to selecting the best candidate for the BOE seats up in November. Thank you.
Amanda.
Ooh, you switched it up on me. Money very much does matter to everybody. The lack of funding can topple our goals as a school district. We need to develop new and better curriculum every single year. We need to come back to the table and start looking at those five-year plan goals with a financial lens. We didn't do that when we first started planning in January. We were told, throw anything at the wall. People are like, "Oh, I want a pool," and, "Oh, I want new tennis courts." In order to really plan for the future, we need to come up with short-term goals and long-term goals. I'm a teacher, I'm an administrator. I want to build those bridges so that we can keep what's amazing here and continue to build on it. I believe in my slate. We've been working together for over a year now. We have crafted these ideas. We've listened to outside people tell us what to do. We have delved into initiatives to save the schools. We've given phone calls and endless meet and greets. We want to create an atmosphere where people want to be here, and they feel listened and heard. We want to make sure that this district is being well-run. If you're investing in us, we want to invest in you. We want to create a stronger Robinsville under this united front and focus on what's doing best for kids. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Nadia.
Thank you. So I am a strong advocate for realizing the full potential of our students. I truly believe in us as a community, and I believe in the students and all that they're possibly capable of. And our students have a myriad of interests, and realizing that is firstly, the most critical point, right? To ensure that we're constantly thinking about their future-focused areas and interests and advancing our resources so that we can meet the needs of all our students. But this requires budget forecasting, proper management of expenses so that we can achieve those goals. And when we had the budget shortfall, we were there on the streets doing what our, what we expected of our community to do, which was show up together, united, letter-writing, and get it to the legislature so that they could help support that shortfall. But the work isn't done, and we are going to continue doing the work. And I'm a daughter of somebody who was always passionate about education, promoting women, learning beyond cultural, socioeconomic limitations, budget limitations, whatever it was. Everyone deserves a strong education, no matter what. Our teachers deserve the best as well. So there's so much work to be done. But I think our energy hasn't waned this entire time. I also believe strongly in my slate and what we're about. I think that tonight, like tonight, is just one small iota of what community engagement looks like. But the last few months have shown me how engaged everyone is. And to continue that engagement. So whether we make it on the Board, and I hope we do, it's, you know, show up on those seats, send those emails. Let us engage with you so that we can be advocates and community advocates for you, for our kids, and other parents that we have throughout our community. And thank you again for this opportunity.
Pellic.
So I wanted to start by saying that this is a, is a great, a great opportunity for, I think, all of us to be able to share a little bit about our platform, who we are, and as well as fielding some of the questions from each and every one of you, keeps us accountable at the same time, right? For if we get elected down the line, or whoever does. So thank you for that. I just wanted to start out by saying that I have been in public education, the regular public education system that we all are a part of right now. And I know that it takes so many moving parts to make it successful. There's so many different groups of people that we need to consider. There's so many different needs that we need to factor in. And so it's no easy task. It's definitely no easy task. So with my background in education, I've known and seen that firsthand at different levels. And with my initial background in finance, I think it's a very nice marriage of the two to be able to help move forward some of the conversations that many of us have been having either behind closed doors or in the public space. Definitely three things that I know Dillip and I share in what we prioritize is responsible spending, so that fiscal responsibility. Providing a well-rounded education to our students, to every single type of child. That, that is probably the most important thing that we can offer them. And most importantly, communication and transparency. Sometimes wonderful things go on, but if they're not communicated, then you never know, right? And sometimes if that communication doesn't work the other way, then we can improve upon whatever we're already doing. So definitely those are three major things that I think should, should be at everyone's forefront. But what I really want to say is that we need to figure out how to get the whole community vested in our public education system here in Robinsville. I've known this community for nearly a decade, though I've only lived here over the past two years. And what, the one thing I found is everyone's very passionate. So let's get together and do something. Go ahead.
Thank you, Dillip.
Thank you, Pellic. Thank you, Christine, League of Women Voters, and REA for providing us with this opportunity. I wanted to say that our district has a diverse student population that has already access to sports and clubs. But compared to other school districts, we have a lot to improve where we can ensure that our, our children have access to high-quality and a large variety of course offerings, sports, and resources so they're college-ready and successful in life. I've been a board member for the past nine months, and I now have a better understanding of our challenges that we face and also the opportunities that we have to improve in all of these areas. I've mentored and interacted with many high school interns in my work, and recent graduates, and first-time workers. And I have a good understanding of the skills and knowledge that students need to be successful in their careers. I, I wanted to say that I'm committed to ensure that our schools provide the students with the right career-focused education and training for them to be successful in life. I look forward to having the opportunity to continue my role as a Board of Education member and collaborate with the community to improve our schools. Thank you. Good night.
Do we have any other remarks, Jeanne?
It's late already, I won't keep you. I just want to say thank you for your responses, for coming out. And I know it wasn't easy, but you guys all shined, I think, didn't they?
Give them a round of applause.
Let's give them a round of applause, thank you. Have a good night, everyone.